I'd like to call this public meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world, and also for those who have passed away in our community. Let us also take a moment of silence tonight for all of the people in our community, in our country, and around the world who have passed away or been affected from the coronavirus. This pandemic has turned our world upside down, but we must remain hopeful and strong. We continue to pray for the doctors, nurses, researchers, and all medical professionals who seek to heal and help those affected and who put themselves at risk in the process. May they have protection and peace. Whether we are home or abroad, surrounded by many people suffering from this illness or only a few, let us stick together, endure together, mourn together, and in place of our anxiety, let us have hope and peace. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster.
President.
Mr. McAndrew.
President.
Dr. Rockchild, here. Mr. Dunninghugh.
Here.
Mr. Gahan.
Here. Please dispense with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, 3A, certificate received from Governor Tom Wolf dated October 1st, 2021, proclaiming that Scranton City is eligible to be reclassified as a third-class city. 3B, correspondence received from DPW Director Tom Priambo dated October 4th, 2021, regarding street sign activity replacement report for the first, second, and third quarters 2021. 3C, single tax office city funds distributed 2021 dated October 4th, 2021. 3D, minutes of the Scranton Redevelopment Authority meeting held September 1st, 2021. 3E, minutes of the Civil Service Commission meeting held September 2nd, 2021.
Are there any comments on any of the third-order items?
President Gahan, I was just on 3E, I was just glad to see that the test scores were not lowered for the master mechanic when selecting somebody for that position.
Anyone else? Any comments? Thank you. If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yes, I have one. This weekend on Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., instead of the Green Ridge Fall Festival that they usually do, which was on hold last year due to the pandemic, and they've also, they're also not doing it this year, but instead they are doing a sidewalk sale over at the Green Ridge Corners for the, some of the businesses that are there. So, might be good to take a trip down there this weekend and see what you can, what you can get, and that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Mr. Waldenberg.
Fourth order, citizens' participation.
Thank you. First speaker tonight is Joan Hoda-Wanitz.
Joan Hoda-Wanitz, Scranton resident. I want to remind everybody of what I said last week. The Albright Memorial Library, in conjunction with the Red Cross, will be hosting a blood drive on Monday, October 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It will be at the Albright Memorial Library, 300 Vine Street. You need to register for an appointment. Please call Jessica Sorrenti, (570) 348-3000, extension 3023, or email her at j.sorrenti@albright.org, or you can call the Red Cross at 1-800-RED-CROSS. And if you go there, you can get a free Halloween tee-shirt while supplies last. And speaking of October 18th, that is the last day to register to vote in the general election on November 2nd. And if you have not yet registered to vote, you can do that while you're giving blood simultaneously at the library. So, October 18th is the last day to register to vote. And with your third arm while you're at the library, you can also fill out a technical survey. What we're trying to do is gather what do our patrons, our community that we serve, want in terms of digital and technical services, so that we keep up to date on the technical world as it changes, and can provide those services to the general public who may have no other access. So, please keep that in mind. Okay. Today is October 12th. Do you know where your 2020 audit is?
So, the update I got today was that we're waiting for the audits from the sewer authority and from the redevelopment authority that have to be attached to that audit.
Okay. And I checked the city's website, no change to the documents posted for firefighters' collective bargaining agreement, so that still has a gap.
That was also brought up again.
Okay. And I would like, especially in fifth order, if you could please explain, what are the advantages of Scranton becoming a 3A city v. say, 2A city? And what does that mean in terms of Scranton as a taxing authority? Does it matter? I know that we can't be a 2A city if we don't have the population, but what will happen when we change classifications, if we do, down to 3A? And how does that affect Scranton as a taxing authority? And finally, in one of the documents, the backup, was the distribution of the single tax office funds, the revenue, on October 4th. There were two documents, so to speak. There was a chart which said that you got $1,062,591.24. Then there was a photocopy of a check for $810,241.83. Where did the difference go? Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Waldenberg, I noticed that as well, if you can get in touch with Mr. Fox, the tax collector, and inquire about that.
I will, Mr. Gahan.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lee Morgan.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. I had an opportunity to watch the meeting last week, and the Home Rule Charter came up. I think the residents of Scranton have to realize that that's the most important piece of legislation that can come into this council and change the direction of this city from the decline it's in at this point. It has very wide-ranging ramifications for the residents, and, you know, I just want to read this. This is preliminary objections in a courtroom, and it says, "Respectfully, the Honorable Court has no jurisdiction or authority to enjoin a lawful ordinance adopted by the city of Scranton pursuant to the authority under the Home Rule Charter." The Charter has a lot of ramifications for all the residents of this city. It's been doing very detrimental things to this city for a very long time. And when you have council members up here who say that they support a strong mayor, form of government, or that they don't support a review by the residents of the Home Rule Charter, let's not forget that the residents of this city voted the Home Rule Charter in. And you have to ask yourself, in a representative republic, that we were before Joe Biden was elected, do the residents and do the citizens of this country have a right to pick their government? Now, when you look at the city of Scranton, it's done it already by creating the Home Rule Charter. And what the council members here are saying is that they just want to maintain the government the way it is. And I really don't blame them because it's so twisted that it offers no benefit to the residents, and that's why our population base has been dropping for probably almost 100 years. And when the residents of Scranton, you have to be honest with yourself, they have no interest in the people they elect or the government that sits in, where it sits today. But if you look at some of the decisions made, whether it has to do with the Scranton Sewer Authority, the parking garages, just looking at the renovations taking place to this building today, the city of Scranton could have bought the courthouse annex for, I think, $1.6 million and gave the city just a great asset, multiple times better than this building. But we've allowed politics to play like they have in the Scranton School District. Now, when the recovery coordinator came to Scranton, I had a chance to sit down with her and talk to her about the governor, the recovery plan for the Scranton School District, the loss of school infrastructure as a detriment to the students in the city of Scranton, and the academic scores of the students in the city of Scranton. And I just find it very sorrowful that we have such an elected government, that really, it's like a Shani Irish community, where the lace curtain Irish rule over the Shani Irish. And that's what's happened in Scranton. And it's just really a shame that the people we elect have no respect for the people that they should be representing. And the other sad thing is that when you look at city government, and believe me, this is not a personal attack, we have people from the Scranton School District that were elected, and we have a mayor in the office of mayor who is on the school board, and they couldn't bring themselves to try to move the city of Scranton schools to perform in a way that would give the students here a chance to have a leg up. We've accepted very poor grades, very poor performance in the Scranton School District, and we've accepted the same from our own government. And I think it behooves the mayor to show up here, as she said she would come here, and speak on the Home Rule Charter and where she stands. And I think this council needs to seriously reconsider where it stands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ryan Barrett.
Good evening, members of council. I have a relatively simple request here. My name is Ryan Barrett. I live at the intersection of North Washington Avenue and Woodlawn, and I'm requesting that the crosswalks at that intersection be painted. As you may be aware, that intersection has St. Clair's Elementary School. It is also a public school bus drop-off and pickup, and for some strange and unknown reason, the crosswalks at that intersection aren't painted. I made a number of requests to DPW. I've had reassurances that the crosswalks would be painted. They have not been. I have a petition here, although I don't think I need a petition for something so obvious, but I do have one here for all of you. It's addressed to DPW ahead of Tom Priambo, and I would like you to consider this request. And that is all that I have for you.
Thank you. And I know that we have sent this, on behalf of this council, have sent it numerous times to the DPW, because we've heard from, even the principal of St. Clair's has reached out to me personally about this, and I don't have an answer for you. It's mind-boggling that that cannot be done. That is a very dangerous, as you well know, intersection. So, again, Mr. Waldenberg, if we can send something, and I will personally call Mr. Priambo again and ask him to get those guys out there and to do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan.
Oh, that's all right. I'll get it.
Oh, I forgot to.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. That exhausts the sign-in sheet for tonight. Would anyone else like to address council this evening?
Thomas Coyne Menucha. Members of council, first I ask, where can the minutes from city councils' various subcommittees that are required to have public meetings advertised and have minutes available for the Sunshine Act be found? The Committee on Rules, Finance, Public Works, Public Safety, and Community Development. Agencies subject to the Sunshine Act include any state or local government body, all subunits appointed by that body that perform an essential government function and exercise authority to take official action or render advice. It can include boards, councils, authorities, commissions, and committees. On the budget, the IT line reflects $155,000 for 2022, but the Bedrock contract alone is 155% of that yearly budget. Relating to 5B, I have some issues. The contract lists the cost of a year at $240,000, while the Bedrock, while the Bedrock interview on the radio reflected 75% of what they can do is done remotely, and that leaves an unbudgeted additional 25% as an estimated payable service charge. This is per the vendor interview on Tech Bridge, episode 27. The contract lists $100 per hour for other work. The covered contracted hours are 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Off-hours, I assume, are hourly as well. There are 11 people listed in Attachment E, disclosed, providing a professional service to the city. Are they planning on, and have they, as the prior contract, been paying taxes to the city as doing business in the city of Scranton? Non-residents who work in the city pay a local income tax of 1% and an additional $52 surcharge tax per year. Attachment E, line 2, was deficient as it requests information on anyone employed by the city of Scranton. This is blank. This is questionable as the current contract falls under this, and the city has been paying for this service by this particular contractor, which presumably would include the above names and personnel at the top of Attachment E. On the matrix, team qualification reviews marked as higher, H-I-R-E, to standard. It should be higher, H-I-G-H-E-R, not higher. Quality control failure. Backup and validation are listed as an hourly fee. Software upgrades, coordinate and install, are at a fee of $100 per hour. This actually may be $200 an hour, as most likely would be stacked with non-support hours. Last, page nine, overview of current technical enrollment environment. Three-person IT department, including interim director. This calls forth a few questions. The IT director position that was not filled is the, was now the IT manager. Is he getting paid the rate of IT manager, or has it been modified and not disclosed? The IT manager is the sole head of the department, therefore, the department head-director. Original conversation on the Home Rule Charter specifically included department heads under the city council. More particularly, the interim director is in direct violation of the Home Rule Charter, and it was put in place in violation of the rules. The interim director, who should have been brought before this council, was in fact declined 5 to 0 and installed backdoor by insertion into a lower position without the higher position to bypass the Home Rule Charter. Carl Dealey on this document is listed as the interim director, and in the official Scranton website lists him as the director of IT, thus reflects a position barred by vote. Is council going to push this breach of conduct to be fully reviewed by the Ethics Board and remove the acting director as the position was granted by intent to violate the city council's rule, vote, and the Home Rule Charter? Thank you.
Mr. Coyne, just to answer your question on the committees, the committees have not met. When the committees meet, like the Committee on Public Works, those meetings, if it occurred with more than two council members, we would publicize those and have those here in council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Marie Schumacher. I watched this meeting last week from home, and I was very, very upset when I saw the discussion, or if you can even call it that, on the Home Rule Charter. I did go through it again, and it turns out that the 30, 30 seconds that Mr. Gahan reported why he was against the Home Rule Charter being on the ballot, managed to say aye on it was 10 or 11 times. And then it was followed by three other people saying, "No," for the same reason. And that, that was just crushing. Do you people not realize you're representatives? I mean, it's what you like, not what the people want.
Marie, Marie, excuse me, you're the only person, you and Mr. Coyne, who have brought up the Home Rule Charter to me or this council. So, I mean, when you're referring to a great outcry from the public, you're the only two people I've heard of that are in favor, and Lee Morgan, in changing or looking at the Home Rule Charter. So, it's not as if we're hearing this great, you know, cry from the public about it.
Okay. What's, what is the problem?
Mr. President, and Ms. Schumacher, also, you have the ability to circulate a petition. If there's this great outpouring of support, a groundswell of support for the Home Rule Charter being revised, then circulate a petition.
Okay. Thank you both for taking a good chunk of my time, but I do read the code. As a matter of fact, if you want to talk code, let's go down to the capital budget, which you all passed. What does the, what does that say? I believe I have it here. I know I have it here. Okay. The Home Rule Charter says that we are the, we are to be able to see the item, itemization of what is in that budget. We didn't see that. It's just another, well, you called it a wish list a couple weeks ago, Mr. Gahan, and I just don't think that's what it is. I mean, I talked about one of the items. Now, you look at the money that's in there, for instance, for the Parks and Recreation next, next year, and I just saw a, an RFP for demolition of the pool house up at Naon Park. Now, how much is going to be left after that is done? We don't know. But I'll tell you, and this is going back several years, you have been told what is happening up at the lookout. It is falling apart. It's falling apart because for every other reason, just like this building. Don't do maintenance, just wait until it's fallen apart, and then let's throw money at it. And if, I would urge you to go up and see what terrible shape it's in. And I did bring the definition of the WPA and some background on it since you all were not around. But that is part of our history, and it's also used very, very much. Okay? And back. So, I hope you are not going to accept another operating budget as you did last year, too. It should go back to the administration. If it's just a menu thing, oh, we're thinking about this, we're thinking about that, well, you know, and, yeah, it's just, it's ridiculous. You just, and then, I do like the idea, by the way, on a different subject, of bringing in the department heads, but I also think you should be bringing in, and not their representative or the chief of staff, our elected officials at least once a quarter. They are the people who bring back the bacon from Harrisburg, and I think they should be in here to hear what you have to say about what our needs are and what they're going to do to help us, because we're not getting it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker.
Good evening. Dave Dobson, President, City of Scranton. As long as the issue came up on the Home Rule Charter, several terms of mayor ago, I've often felt that one tweak we could do, and I do agree it's a tweak. I mean, this day and age, it can wind up with better or worse, but a two-term executive. Right now, we have somebody that seems to be pretty good and honest, but as we found out, that was not the case years ago. I heard of all kinds of things, and believe them to be true. Not too much on there. So, I'm going to talk on my pet topics again. With the COVID, it should be known that Ron DeSantis of Florida had assisted up, is deceased from COVID. The governor of Maine is also an anti-vaxxer, anti-masker, and his wife passed away, and he went to an anti-vax rally seven days later. He must have really loved the poor lady. You know, that's sad. The same with Governor Abbott, he's banning masks and banning required vaccinations. You know, how about if somebody has to work with a bunch of anti-vaxxers if they could just walk out and sign up for indefinite unemployment until those people decide to get vaxxed? You shouldn't have to subject yourself to that. But the moral of the story is, please get vaccinated. Please. It's totally ridiculous, the way people are rejecting science. And in our area, we've had some good news. There weren't any deaths in a couple of days, so that's really good news to hear. That's on the upbeat. On the vote, last week, I heard Joe Biden getting bashed again and bashed again. He didn't have any choice with the Taliban in Afghanistan. He either had to withdraw. He withdrew four months later, and I feel very sorry for them women. On a personal note, I think we should have just stayed for a while, but, you know, we can't. Not after it's been negotiated with anybody else. That's disturbed me with the presidency, that you could just wipe out a treaty that's been negotiated and passed through Congress and everything else.
Mr. Dobson, I don't want to interrupt you, but if you can try to keep your comments towards city, something with the city, anything.
Yeah, well, other people come up here and they start it, and I just like to put things up.
Well, then, that's because it was somehow related to Joe Biden and the signs, so I was trying to walk a fine line, but, you know.
Yeah, yeah. But anyway, try to contact your congressman and tell them it's time to vote, to get laws on the polls. You don't want to stand in line. You don't want to stand in line for six or eight hours because of who's in there, or have a state legislature decide who is the mayor of Scranton, or who is on council in Scranton, or who is your representative from this area, which we don't have a State Representative Assembly, but it is the area. All right, I'll pack it in there. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good night. Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight? Mr. Volenberg?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Councilman Schuster, any motions or comments tonight?
I'm just going to ask, I'm going to reach out to Frank and ask him if we could get a list of the city, a list of all the city condemned properties, and then a list of the demolition list for the city, please.
Certainly, Mr. Schuster.
Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's all.
Councilman McAndrew, any motions or comments tonight?
I have a few. So, last November, I brought forth concerns and complaints about this illegal auto repair service on the rear of 1149 Saloon Street. And then I brought it up again, because it continues. I mean, they leave, they come back. We got brought up again maybe a month ago. We didn't get anything back on that or any follow-up, right, that I'm aware of? So, concerned residents came to me again over the weekend and said, you know, this is still occurring. Instead of opening the garage door and leaving it open, they're going through the side door, and they're painting cars. And I know that, you know, first of all, this is an illegal garage, but even a regular garage has to follow so many safety protocols. So, the neighbors are still very concerned. Can we please get a follow-up or an update from code enforcement on this and have them, you know, really take a hard look at this, because it's almost a year? Okay, and next, so I received a bunch of complaints about a stop sign that was removed last week on Wyoming and Sunset. So, you know, I've never heard of stop signs being removed. Maybe it happens in the city from time to time. I know, for the most part, you know, different areas and residents want to see more stop signs, because, you know, there's a lot more cars on the road. So, their concern is why, without any rationale or even, some of the neighborhood associations said, you know, we don't even know about it, because it poses a safety hazard to the neighbors pulling out of the driveways, as well as the children in the neighborhood, and kids going back and forth to Robert Morris. All right? So, please find out why these were taken down. I don't think it was vandalism, so please check into that. And also, since we're on the topic of Green Ridge, I was also brought to my attention that there's a large pothole. I know it's been, complaints have been sent, you know, to the city about a large pothole in front of 1805 North Washington Avenue. So, could you please follow up to see where they're at with satisfying that request that was already submitted?
Yeah, I'll follow up with the water company on that, Mr. McAndrew.
Thank you. And, all right, so, you know, recently, I brought up in Bellevue, the truck issue, the large trucks that are, you know, violating the ordinance that was just actually written for Bellevue. And I want to thank the police department for the immediate responses to our inquiry. All right, so, you know, we asked last week, is the officer, Gaido, he's the only one who has certification to, you know, to the truck weight inspection. So, they responded and said, you know, he is the only officer to perform in-depth commercial vehicle inspections. So, we also asked, is he retiring? Because that was the word on the street. And they responded, yes, he is retiring from, you know, the Scranton Police Department later this month. And I said, I also asked, is there any other officers currently in training as truck weight inspectors? And the response was, no, there is not. Upon researching training files, I learned that there have been six officers that had attended the weights and measures class in the past, but we're currently looking into the next class offered by the state, and I guess that's not until the spring. So, there's going to be, you know, a time period where no one can actually pull these trucks over and weigh them, so that's an issue. So, with that in mind, I did ask, you know, hey, can we share that service with the county, you know, Lackawanna County Sheriff's Department? And because they might have certified truck weight inspectors to assist the Scranton Police Department. And they responded, the SPD has worked with other local and state agencies in the past for truck details within city limits. So, they said they've done it before. Can they do it? And my understanding is, you know, the administration's aware of this, and they're trying to work on this and come up with a plan. So, I thank them, and please thank them, but could you, you know, send some correspondence back saying, you know, thank you for your responses, but what are we going to do now that this police officer is retiring? And is there any way we can actually set up this, you know, shared services or have these other agencies help us out?
I'll let them firm up with the other agencies.
Thank you. And, let me see, I think that's it, or should be it. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Any motions or comments tonight?
Yes. First, as we are discussing in caucus in relation to Item 5B tonight, the Bedrock IT contract that's to be introduced, it did bring up, you know, like staffing in our IT department, and a while ago, I'd asked for regular personnel reports from the administration so that council could stay up to date on, you know, what city employees we have and what positions are filled or not filled. And I would like to, once again, send correspondence to the administration to ask for that, at least on a monthly basis, to have that report. And so, I'd like to make a motion for that to be sent from all of council.
There's a motion and a second on the question? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and so moved.
And the other thing that I wanted to add, I did appreciate Ms. Schumacher bringing up during her participation time, our communication with state legislators. I do think that we should have more communication with them, and I think that it's a great idea to have them come into council chambers to explain some of the things that they've done that will be helpful for the city, and I would love to hear from them, so I'm not sure where other council members stand on that, if they're interested in inviting our state legislators into a caucus or council chambers. But I'm in favor of that. That's all. Thank you.
Councilman Donahue, any motions or comments tonight?
Just to touch on the difference between the Class III and II, or the difference in the classification between III and II-A, it's my understanding that we're technically still not a II-A city, we're a formally II-A city that operates under Home Rule. So, really, this goes back to, even to the discussion, too, with the charter. The real problem is, is how convoluted and outdated Pennsylvania law is in terms of how municipalities are governed. This was created, this was a system that was created in 1972, includes over 2,500 municipalities, 67 counties, 500 school districts. That can't be efficient in today's world. So, whether it's a discussion on the charter or classification, realistically, we use II-A when it's to our benefit, and we use Home Rule when it's to our benefit. But that's the way Pennsylvania law is written, and that needs, that's where that needs to change and be simplified and give us more direction to actually be successful, because the current system hamstrings us in a lot of things that we could possibly do or not do. So, that's where I stand on that, and I just wanted to make that comment. That's all I have. I'll reserve my rest comments for agenda items.
Thank you. Yeah, in terms of, in third order, the letter from the governor's office, as Councilman Donahue mentioned about being the third-class city, I think we need to have a better understanding of what the implications would be, and I don't know all the implications, to be honest with you. So, Solicitor Hayes is looking into that. I also think we need to reach out to Senator Flynn's office regarding that potential change. I do know that the city and the school district have had the benefit of special legislation over the years because of the class of, classification, with the most recent being the LST rate and the payroll tax review options. And I do know that under a previous council, they pursued the change to a third-class status because they were trying to institute a non-resident wage tax. But the changes to Act 47 since 2014 ruled even that out, and that ended up not working. So, I can't really comment on it and say, you know, whether I think it's a good move or a bad move. I think we need to find out what exactly the ramifications would be. So, we'll continue to look into that. As for the Home Rule Charter, I appreciate everyone, you know, who has interest in changing the Home Rule Charter, but I think, what do you exactly want to change would be my question. So, I've heard that it needs to be changed, but what are the issues with it, I guess? I look at it, if there needs to be tweaks to it, that's fine, but the overall form of government, I tend to support. I like it. I like the strong mayor form of government and the strong mayor council form of government. So, I wouldn't be in favor of changing that. This issue was brought up years ago, as you all know, and the study commission was formed. They looked at it, they put it to the people, put it to a referendum, to a vote, and the people voted against changing the form of government. So, does it need to be updated? There probably needs to be tweaks made to it. I haven't really looked into exactly what those might be. But as Solicitor Hayes said, if any member of the public wants to initiate that process, and it is a process, you can do that. But for my sake, I'm just being honest with you, I would not support that at this time. There is an Ethics Board opening. I mentioned this a few weeks ago, and Mr. Volenberg put an ad out in the newspaper. We, I announced it at a council meeting, and we did not get anybody who was interested, so I'll announce it again. There is an opening. If anybody has any interest, please email your letter of interest or resume to mr.volenberg@fvolenberg@scrantonpa.gov, or you can send it to 340 North Washington Avenue to the City Clerk's Office. I'd like to make a motion at this time that city councils send correspondence to Mayor Cognetti, asking her what her plan is for the Naught Park Pool Complex.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second on the question. I've brought this up before, and I'm not going to go on and on about it like I have in the past, because I think everybody knows where I stand. But I am concerned that this is not a number-one priority of this administration. There has been movement, they're going to apparently demolish the pools and fill them in, but outside of that, Councilman Donahue and I recently met with members of the mayor's administration, and I really, truthfully, did not get the feeling that this project is at the top of the list. There has been, there is no plan moving forward yet on how, what we're going to do up there, what option we're going to choose. And I really believe that every day that goes by, that we don't have a plan, every day that goes by, that there's not somebody looking into how we would finance this, it's another year or at least two years that there's going to be nothing up there. And to me, that is totally unacceptable. So, I really think we need to see some movement on this. I believe that we should investigate, and I've made this point clear to the mayor and the administration, potentially financing this project through a borrowing, a capital borrowing. There are different ways to do that, we could be creative with that. But to think that we're going to somehow come up with grant funding in the amount of $8 to $10 million is, even $6 million, is just not, I don't think, feasible. So, the pool complex there is so important, not just to the Hill section, but it's important to the city. There's been great strides made at Naught Park over the last few years with the volunteers up there who have just, you know, taken the park by storm. There's a project going on up there every single week, and the missing piece of the park is the pool. There's a slide, there was so many, so much money and so much investment up there under the Doherty administration, to let it kind of languish, to me, is, again, unacceptable. So, I know that the mayor and her administration want to see something happen, I just don't think that there's enough push yet, there's not enough movement, and I would like to light a fire under somebody to at least start the process and the conversation. Anyone else on the question?
Just to add to that, we need to get the design and engineering work done so that we know exactly, or have a better idea of exactly what that final cost would be before we even, you know, get into the financing part of it. So, I do agree that we just need to move forward on that, on picking which option we're going with, and then getting into the design and engineering work on that.
Yes, on the question, I'd also like to add that I'm in agreement with this motion, and we need to get a plan together. The park is such a great asset to our city. I mean, people come here just to go to that park, that park and events that are held there, and it's not, it's certainly not the only park we have in the city. We have a lot of parks that need attention and different projects, and I'm still looking forward to getting our parks assessment to find out what we need in those other parks. But we can't just ignore this and, you know, wait another year to make a decision and come up with a plan, because it's just going to be sitting there without anything being done for however long. This is, we're thinking long-term, this is going to take a couple of years, and I don't want to continue to prolong it. I'm not sure why that is the case, but I'm in favor of this motion.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yeah, there's an old saying, if you fail the plan, you plan to fail. So, we saw a couple of presentations on this project, we saw options. There was a lot of excitement that I remember, a lot of discussion, and then all of a sudden, nothing. So, you know, it's October, October becomes January like this, January becomes June like this, and then, you know, I don't see it happen, you know, we know it's not going to happen this year, but once you stop, it takes that much longer to get back to the planning part of this. So, I agree with this motion, it should be updated.
Thank you. Anyone else? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it, and the motion passes. Just a few updates as well. I think Ms. Jeffries last week asked about the 600 block of Lackawanna Avenue near the Radisson Hotel, the wall, as you're coming, near the Radisson is in deplorable condition, and it has been for the past few years. So, there was a, Mr. Volenberg looked into it with Senator Flynn's office, and they did get right back to us, that there was a $351,000 grant received by the county in March of 2019 for that project, for the complete rehab of that whole area there. And the project was delayed due to COVID-19, obviously, and there was a shortfall in funding to complete the project. So, I reached out to Brian Jeffers, the county Chief of Staff, today and had a brief conversation with him on it, and he was going to look into it. It's such a crucial area in the city, and if there's any way that we can help in moving that project along, I think we should. We sent a follow-up message to the city administration regarding my questions about employee and management vaccination rates and possibly mandating that to all employees. The Public Health Coordinator acknowledged the receipt of that and advised that we will get a response very soon. So, I appreciate that. Also, a resident had inquired about several issues in South Scranton regarding quality of life issues in the corner of Cedar Ave, Elm Street, East Elm Street, corner of Cedar Ave and Brook Street, and the 1600 block of Cedar Avenue. The violation letters have been sent by the Licensing and Inspections Department. And that's all I have this week. Thank you.
5B for introduction and ordinance, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the City of Scranton and Bedrock Technology, aka Keystone Technology Consulting, LLC, to provide information technology management services.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that Item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question? On the question, I have a few comments on this. So, going through the documentation here, on page three, it states that the Managed Services Agreement, basically the contract, contains proprietary information, which is confidential, so they did not provide that in the backup. I had been going back and forth this morning with Solicitor Hayes, and the administration is going to send Solicitor Hayes the contract on a confidential basis so that he can go through it and, I think, parse out what is confidential and what's proprietary. We can look at it, and the council can view it in a confidential manner, but it's not going to be open to the public. Now, I did speak to the mayor Now, I did speak to the mayor this afternoon and raised the issue and she stated to me that they will release whatever is not confidential and proprietary because there's things within the contract that we need to see. Like, we know the term of the contract's four years, but I want to see what the language states on when that gets, it automatically gets re-upped. So what does the language look like there? So there's questions on that that I'd like to see. So that's in discussions. Also, on page five, it lists the rubric. Now, I can't, I'm not going to speak for everyone on council, but, you know, technology and some of those technical terms is not my wheelhouse and the administration is choosing this company, which is much more expensive than the lowest bidder. The company that the administration is choosing is charging $20,000 a month, the lowest bidder's charging $12,500 a month. So I did speak to the mayor about this today and we both agreed that the IT department, we talked about it in caucus tonight, Bedrock Technologies and any other member of the administration should come in next week and we should have a conversation and a discussion about the rubric, how this company was chosen and what exactly they're going to do in layman's terms. So that we know what kind of, it's a four-year contract, so we want to have a good understanding of what we're entering into here. The other question that I had was there's a $100 hourly rate if the company has to perform any work outside of what's listed in the contract, but it's hard to tell what exactly that would look like. So the company's only on the clock technically from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, but will respond to emergencies after hours, so as that one, the $100 hourly rate kicks in, that's not clear. So we have questions about that. On page nine, it states the IT department has an interim director. And everyone remembers that back in July, the mayor appointed Carl Dealey as interim IT director effective July 7th. Council unanimously voted that down because we did not think he was qualified. The mayor then put him in a network systems manager position, I think it was for $61,000 a year. I did raise this issue with the mayor today and asked her why there is an interim IT director, because we did not approve that. She said it was a mistake, a clerical error, and it should have said network systems manager because there is no IT director or interim IT director. So that was her explanation there. The, on page 46, the disclosures by current contractors form was not filled out correctly. They did not include answers to any of the questions. I raised that with the mayor and Solicitor Hayes, they did send you that documentation, correct? Okay.
There was a disclosure form sent to me this afternoon. I can't tell if it's for this RFQ or the prior one, the prior contract that they had.
Okay.
Thanks.
And then I mentioned earlier, the length of the contract is going to be four years, but it's hard to tell without looking at the actual contract whether or not, what the renewal language looks like. I tend to not really like the automatic renewal of these type of contracts, so I think we need to look at that language. Also, I'd like to know how much the city has paid to Bedrock Technologies to date. The city has previously engaged them under an emergency order going back a few months. We don't have an IT director yet, but I'd like to know, you know, where we are with that process. Assuming we've interviewed people, but are we any closer to getting an IT director? One of the questions that I had before speaking to the mayor was if, in fact, we do approve this and hire this company, we're hiring a third party to essentially, you know, manage the IT department, do we need all of the, not all of the employees, we don't have a ton, but do we need all of those employees in the IT department? And the mayor stated that there are going to be reductions in staffing. What that looks like, I'm not exactly positive, but she's supposed to expand upon that by next week. So, and that would make sense if we end up hiring this company. As I mentioned, the rubric in some parts, difficult to understand, so hopefully we can get that cleared up next week. It's hard to make a decision without all of the information that was not provided. So we're going to be receiving that information. We'll have a conversation next week with Bedrock Technologies, hopefully, members of the IT department and the administration, and then we can move forward from there. And that's all I have. Anyone else?
Just to add.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just quickly to add that I also want to see what it looks like in terms of the whole IT budget. So I was made aware today that some of the stuff that's in this, that's covered under this contract might come out of different parts of our, of our IT budget. For example, software licensing, that's under capital improvements or professional services, I believe now, but then that will be under, covered under this. But I want to see that broken out in terms of what our total IT department budget was last year compared to what it's going to be this year with salaries and all the other costs broken out more efficiently.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll definitely vote to introduce, but I have a simple, my question is a simple one. Does this $20,000 a month, $240,000 a year contract satisfy the need for an IT director with a realistic salary, that was the biggest complaint last year, for the 2022 budget? I don't want to see both. I'd just like to see one.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
So I was glad to see there was a lot of questions on this. A few months ago, and I think several times, I brought up some of my concerns about the department when it comes to outsourcing, when it comes to consultants, things like that, and how much of the budget they've spent. So this is a department that has issues and I hope for some clarification on what the plan is moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
5C for introduction, a resolution authorizing reapportment of Mary Ann Sinclair, 1310, Luzern Street, Scranton, Pennsylvania, 18504, to serve as a member of the Scranton Housing Authority. Ms. Sinclair's prior term expired on September 27, 2021. Ms. Sinclair is being reappointed to a five-year term effective September 28, 2021, and will expire on September 27, 2026.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I've known Mrs. Sinclair my whole life and it's just wonderful that she's still devoted to the city and still serving the city in her capacity. I wish her all the best.
I agree. Anyone else? All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, file of the council number 87, 2021, an ordinance setting forth its intent to provide funds to prepay in full its outstanding federally taxable general obligation note, series of 2018, providing when this ordinance shall become effective, authorizing and directing the preparation, execution, and delivery of all other required documents and the taking of all other required action by specified officers of the city, providing for severability of provisions, providing for the repealing of all ordinances or parts of ordinances insofar as the same shall be inconsistent herewith.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second. On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The ayes have it and so moved.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, file of the council number 86, 2021, an ordinance establishing a no parking zone along the southerly side of Bird Street, State Route 3023, beginning approximately 80 feet west of its intersection with Cedar Avenue for a distance of 95 feet to allow for safe-site distance for a proposed driveway for the Dollar General store being constructed and located at 800 Cedar Avenue.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A. Second.
On the question? On the question, this doesn't really have anything to do with 7A, but it just sparked my memory. Could we send something to Licensing and Inspections about Dollar Generals in the city and other convenience stores and mini-marts and CVS, Rite-Aids, about someone just driving around from the city and looking at these places? Because when I drive around and I get a lot of complaints about the garbage, the high weeds, the way that the properties look, not all of them, but some of them look terrible. I've sent them in before, I don't know if anything's been, the one in Manuka was in horrendous condition. They just let it go. Makes the whole neighborhood look bad and we need to start holding these stores accountable if they're going to be in our city and we're going to keep approving these type of things. Anyone else on the question? Roll call, please.
Yes?
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gohren?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7A legally and lawfully adopted.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, resolution number 225, 2021, supporting passage of Pennsylvania House Bill 1393, which decriminalizes possession of fentanyl test strips for personal use.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B. Second.
On the question? Roll call, please.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Gohren?
Yes, I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
And one final thing, we'll put the Plotkin Shoe Store piece in eighth order next week. Have we heard back, Kevin, from that gentleman? I know he originally said he was, didn't want to appeal it.
No, we received, we provided him with, you know, formal notification regarding his right to a hearing and I haven't heard anything different. So we have it scheduled to vote on, I believe the.
Is it next week or the week after?
I think it's the week after.
Week after.
Oh, the week after, okay. So we're good. Okay. If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good job, Frank.